It's time for the council meeting session. Mr. Hernandez is here, we have two members.
.....................
It's fifteen minutes after ten and we have Mr. Fier, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Hernandez, Mrs. Kowski, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Savinic, Mrs. Rollers, Mrs. Chick. Would the council please come to order? We do have some presentations, we're gonna start with the presentation. Could we all... Let me point out that this will be a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 21st day of January, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in a city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. So I will call on Ruth Galanter for the first presentation, and Mike Hernandez will be second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have beside me a familiar figure in this chamber, Judge Harry Pragerson. And you all know Judge Pragerson, he's the guy who took charge of the Century Freeway case and directed our lives for the next, how many years? Twenty, something like that.
Well, at least another fifty and I hope to be here.
Yeah, alright, see, that's what I mean. And he was also the judge in charge of the Hyperion Sewage Treatment case, and we all know that Harry Pragerson never lets go of a case, even after we've reached a settlement agreement. But the reason we're here is not, in fact, to honor Judge Pragerson, but we've decided that even he has to fess up that he couldn't do all this without a really dedicated and capable staff. And so our purpose this morning is to recognize Richard Johnson Dick, who for the past twenty-eight years has been the guy behind Harry Pragerson. You didn't know there was one, but there was one. Dick served in the Marine Corps for twenty-four years, and during World War II, he was with the Corps in Okinawa and in China. During the Korean War, he participated in the Armed Forces landing at Incheon. It's a busy fellow you have working for you. He was awarded the Bronze Star during the Tet Offensive while serving as a captain in Vietnam. And then he came and came home and became a special court coordinator to Judge Pragerson, where he assisted in the upgrading of the Hyperion wastewater treatment plant, which has now achieved full secondary treatment. His job was to keep all of us involved in the case talking to each other so that we could actually reach agreement and then carry out the agreement. And he did that with skill and sufficient charm that everybody got the thing done, and we are here happily honoring him today for his work. He helped, as I said, in establishing the cooperative relationship between the city and Hill Bay, who were the plaintiffs, and we were the defendants, and kept an eye on our city officials as we accomplished the upgrading at Hyperion. So it is my pleasure to present to... Dick actually lives in Indiana, so he was gonna have a hard time being here this morning, so we asked his sidekick here to stand in for him. And so it's my pleasure, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, to recognize and honor Dick Johnson for his many contributions to the welfare and good health of the City of Los Angeles and our residents, to wish him a happy and prosperous future through his proxy, whom I will now introduce, Judge Harry Pragerson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galanter. As the Councilwoman has pointed out, Dick Johnson lives in Indiana. He's lived there for the past fifteen years. I'm in constant communication with him, by fax and by phone. And Dick has really been a catalyst to get so many of these projects moving and going and getting people to work together. So he's been very valuable to the court and to the community. As a matter of fact, this morning, as I drove down here, I got a call from Dick. He has no idea what's going on here today. He'd probably love to be here because it's about thirty degrees below...
Neither do we, Judge.
That's alright.
Speak for yourself, John.
I could make some comments on that, but I'll let it go, okay? Don't, alright. But Dick would like to be here, 'cause it's about thirty degrees below in Crawfordsville, Indiana. But I was driving down this morning, he got me on my car phone, and he said, "Judge, the armory in West LA is closed down for the weekend. There are hundred-and-fifty homeless people that have been staying there. We need to find a place to put them up over this weekend. I've been working with Century Housing Corporation with the Salvation Army. Century Housing has a property on Ninth and Alameda, and we have everything going, except we need the okay of the fire department." Whom can I call, whom can I deal with? And here he is, two thousand miles away in Indiana, worrying about a hundred-and-fifty homeless people, who had it not been for Dick, would probably be sleeping on the streets tonight. And fortunately, I spoke with Councilwoman Galanter, she's gonna use her best efforts to help Dick, right?
You betcha.
It's on television.
It's on television. Not only that, we're gonna get Dick a copy of the tape.
Great, great. I'd like just to take one second, 'cause I know Dick is very close to Chris Westhoff of the City Attorney's Office, who's worked with us all these years, and why don't you just say hi to Dick?
Almost as many years as he has...
Almost as many years.
Yeah. Dick, I just wanna congratulate you. Obviously, we had a long and sometimes difficult, but certainly inspiring process in getting Hyperion put together, and you are an integral part of it. And I'm just glad that the City Council was able to recognize your efforts on behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles.
And I'd like to just ask Bob Norris, who's the executive vice president of the Century Housing Corporation, which is the privatized version of the Century Freeway housing program, and which is a major developer of affordable housing in the Los Angeles area. I wanted to give you a commercial.
Dick, congratulations on this award and simplify, sir.
A few of us are Marines, so we just can't forget it, right, John? Thank you very much, and I appreciate this.
We from the Navy are very proud of our minority agency in the Navy Department, the Marine Corps.
Uh-oh.
Well, John, it's alright. You're a good guy, and I've known you for many, many years. You're one of the great football heroes of my early life.
Thank you, Judge.
So all I can say is all the best.
Mr. President, John?
Mr. Fier?
Harry, Judge Pragerson? Before you all step down, you know, I've known Judge Pragerson for years and years. Not everybody knows how eclectic Harry is. It's not only the cause of the environment or the cause of the homeless. He also match makes for his law clerks, he's kind of an all-around guy. But when I was running Betsedek, Harry really demonstrated the depth of his passion for the issue of serving homeless people. Tenacious as heck about getting new shelters started, getting new programs from Westwood to Bell and places in between, and not letting anybody off the hook. And whether it's the way the Century Freeway matter worked out, or Hyperion, or the issue of homelessness in the city. If Harry Pragerson is on the case, he will not stop until a job is actually done. And I have to say, you are a hero to all of us. It was a great honor to me when you swore me into this job, and it's delightful to see you here. Good luck.
And now you know that it was because Dick Johnson was behind his left shoulder breathing down his neck.
And now I know that honoree deserves enormous credit for that.
Thank you, Michael.
See you later, Judge. Always a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez. Call the role first.
Burns, and Chegg, Fier, Galanter, Gober, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Furrow, twelve members present, Mr. President, and a quorum.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Alright, Mr. Hernandez moves, Mr. Fier seconds. There's no objection, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
There's no objection, unanimous vote. Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like Jeanne Durand to please come up on behalf of Joyce Anne Durand. The presentation I'm gonna make today is being made posthumously. I'm sorry, I apologize. And it's being done in recognition of a woman who a community chose to be the grand marshal for its most recent parade in Highland Park, even though she was no longer with us. And the remarks I wanna make are basically because if she was still with us, I'm sure we'd be recognizing her efforts, and we didn't have that opportunity. And we want to do it because she also has a partner in life who has continued to follow through on the work she was doing, and the community wanted this recognition to be made. Joyce Anne Durand was a conscientious, committed individual who was dedicated to many worthwhile causes, and you should know that in the Highland Park community is where she did most of her work. She loved the arts. She majored in music and art at Indiana University. She performed opera at the Amundsen Theater and sang Irish songs for Ed Sullivan on the show. Her accomplishments in the community, you should know it, included being one of the founding members and working towards the formation of Mount Washington Preschool. She worked with the Mexican-American Bar Association, as well as our own deputy city attorney, Marcia Gonzalez, I'm sorry, in regards to providing legal services for people in the community. My last meeting with Jeanne Marie was at a local delicatessen called Galco's in Highland Park. And at the time, she was talking about purchasing some high-pressure water machines. And what her concept was to purchase the machines, hire students from Franklin High School, so that they could work at cleaning the sidewalks. And they did that. And then her reality was that became one of the TNI projects that evolved in Highland Park. She spent a lot of time feeding the needy, almost two decades. And after the 1994 earthquake, she hit the streets and just wanted to make sure that she was helping people. She at one time was a candidate. You should know that her and her husband did not hesitate to take out papers against me because they wanted to be the council people and at the same time chose to support me and have been a strong source of support for me on several occasions. And she at one time wanted to be a school district member because of her strong desire to help the youth. And she withdrew because she started developing the symptoms of cancer. And so I just wanted to make, basically, talk about the last, therefore, but be it resolved that by the adoption of the resolution of the council of the City of Los Angeles, we hereby commend Joyce Anne Durand. A woman blessed with extraordinary sense of human caring and commitment to others, and on behalf of the Northeast community, we express our appreciation to her husband Jeanne Durand and their children, Jean Pierre, Dante, and Dejean, for sharing their unique talents with all the families of the Northeast Los Angeles community.
Good morning. I'm Marcia Gonzalez-Cambro. You may know me from prior appearances as a deputy city attorney with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. I'm here today in a private capacity, and I'm really honored that Jeanne Durand asked me to make some comments on behalf of the family. Thanking Councilman Hernandez and thanking this council for their recognition of Joyce's contributions. I've known Joyce since about the mid-1980s, when I was very active with the Mexican-American Bar Association. Joyce and Jean approached our bar association to try to organize free legal service clinics in the Highland Park area. It was an area that had been relatively neglected by legal services. And Joyce... And Joyce took the ball and ran with it and organized both the lawyers and the community around Saturdays where there would be everything happening on a Saturday. There was food giveaways, clothes giveaways, consumer education. We met, I can't remember, it was the auditorium, I believe, for a church in Highland Park, free legal advice from bilingual lawyers. Those of you who know Joyce know that she was involved in anything that was happening in Highland Park. The councilman has mentioned the street cleanups. I remember her being involved in even trying to organize a track team, a community organized track team. Joyce inspired the Mexican-American Bar Association to work with her to translate the Bill of Rights of our Constitution. It was the first time that in bar association knowledge and history, anyone had ever said, if people are going to learn about their rights, why isn't the Bill of Rights translated and available for them? She had it translated, paid for the printing on very beautiful scroll-type material, and it was disseminated throughout the community. I know the Mexican-American Bar Association even still uses it as an educational tool. The thing that struck me the most about Joyce, though, is whatever she was involved with, whoever she was involved with, it was out of an absolute, genuine respect for people. She did not do it out of pity. She did not do it out of feeling that folks were disadvantaged, were unfortunate, were in need of some sort of help from people higher up. She definitely did it from just a respect for people being human beings and people meriting being treated with respect. Joyce came from a family of wealth, I understand, but lived a very humble life, and in that humble life was incredibly respectful to whoever it is that needed her assistance that could help and benefit from her. Joyce was an incredible forger of people of different ethnicities and different races getting together and getting along, especially in her community. I am Latina. My husband is African-American, and we have adopted a mixed-ethnic child. And I remember when we first came into the adoption system, the social workers were ecstatic that there was a couple that was willing to adopt a mixed-race child because there were so many children in the adoption system that are of mixed race or mixed ethnicity, and couples are not very willing to adopt mixed children. Joyce would have adopted all 10,000 of them in LA County if she had had the chance. She respected people for being human beings regardless of their ethnicity, but recognized the value of cultural difference and promoted it to no end. Thank you, family, for letting me have these words, and thank you, councilperson and the council, for recognizing and respecting Joyce and her memory of the contribution she made.
Thank you very much. My name is Jean-Marie Durand. I'm here to pay homage to my wife also. In our community, the greatest miracle that we thought she has performed is to have me and Mr. Hernandez standing at the same podium, saying some good things together. Mike Hernandez was very due to Joyce. A mother instinct forced me to abandon my pursuit of Mike Hernandez's job. And the argument she gave me was so peremptory that I find myself obliged to fall in line with Mike and do what has to be done. Mike, I want to pay homage to you. You were taking your, while you were taking your time solving your own problem, you had also taken a great effort and accomplished the impossible, that is, to put an end to a form of brigandage that we have in our community, brigandage that's so accurately described by the Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas as recreational violence. You did a very good job, Mike. We are very proud of you, and we honor you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The Chair recognizes Council President Ferraro.
Yeah, my wife, two kids, Sarah, Kate?
Yeah, sure.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Hi, Rick. Mr. President, members of the council, today we're going to honor somebody who's been here a long, long time. Tony Miera, the Chief Deputy Controller, is retiring after 34 years of service to the city, actually over 40 years in public service. Tony began in the city in 1966, the year I became a council member, and he has a unique distinction of having worked under four elected city controllers, beginning with Charlie Navarro, Iowa Reiner, James Hahn, and finally, finally, Rick Tuttle. Tony Miera is an institution for most of us who have been worked in the city for any length of time. You can almost say that he has been a de facto controller all these years and has seen the city through many of the major financial and accounting issues. Tony has always been counted on to fix whatever problems or issues having to do with city finances and accounting without compromising the honesty and integrity of the city system. In addition to his city career, Tony has an amazing full life of service as a serviceman in Korea War, city commissioner in Monterey Park, as a scoutmaster, a teacher, a professor, and a husband and father. Tony, we commend you for all your service and accomplishments. We will miss you, and we hope that you have a great retirement. But let me also point out that Tony is a descendant of a very old and distinguished New Mexico family, which dates its presence in New Mexico from the Spanish colonial times. And Tony's had a remarkable career, and now therefore be it resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the mayor, the controller, and the City Council of Los Angeles here I commend Antonio Tony Miera for outstanding leadership and dedication of service to the people of Los Angeles and wish him many more years of active involvement for the betterment of the people. Mr. President, I'd ask that we adopt this unanimously, but before we present it to Tony, I'd like to have the City Controller say a few words.
Thank you, John. Ladies and gentlemen, as John Ferraro pointed out, Mr. Miera has been the Chief Deputy Controller for Mr. Navarro, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Hahn, and during my years of service. A remarkable career, the word integrity and dedication to the city, to the citizens of the city, to the taxpayers of the city, has epitomized Tony Miera's career. Earlier, we heard another very fine man, Harry Pragerson, introduced, and we had some sense of the career. We're in the same league here. There's Harry Prager said, well, I'm now going beyond the professional responsibilities. The sorts of community involvement Harry Pragerson had that were memorialized a few minutes ago when I walked in, and we all know well, particularly those of us who went to UCLA and have been active, Judge Pragerson. Tony Miera's career, the highest award given by the Boy Scouts of America was given to Tony Miera a few years ago. It's called the Silver Beaver Award. The Incheon Landing in the Korean War, we now call them Navy SEALs, Navy Frogmen. Tony Miera was at the spearhead of that particular effort. Father Boyle and what he has done for the community. Tony Miera and the Miera family have been there over and over again with Father Boyle. He's also a friend of the family. And then in terms of some of the achievements of the office, it's always Tony Miera. The Certificate of Excellence, which we have won for our financial nationally, we recognize for that. Tony Miera, again and again and again, the installation of the Financial Management Information System, a great career, ladies and gentlemen, one that is worthy of the very best recognition of the City of Los Angeles. Tony, thank you.
Tony, I want to present this on behalf of the City Council and all the people of Los Angeles, and thank you for the great service you've given to the city, always dedicated to the betterment of our community. And I'd like you to introduce your wife and your son and those who are here for you.
Tony, before you begin, there are some council members that would like to say a few words. The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
It's hard to add what's been, and when Council President Ferraro was speaking, I said there was only one thing I disagreed with him, and he said he'd been working under four controllers. I said to Ron Deaton, he's been four controllers, basically. I have incredible respect for Tony. He is a rock, a solid rock in this city, someone who has served this city with great professionalism and honor and distinction, and I just want to really wish you a well-earned retirement. Whatever you do, you have really earned and you deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ms. Akowski.
Just to echo a little bit what Mr. Wax said, there have been four people elected to the controller position, but I think Tony has always been the controller in the city. And I think, with no disrespect to Rick, those who have known the budget know, and that's why he has stayed there through those different tenures, because he really is the rock. It's going to be a very, very difficult position to fill with Tony not there. So Tony, thank you for all those years.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you. I want to add my appreciation to Tony as well. You've served with distinction for a long, long time, and I've always appreciated the forthrightness of your responses when your call upon to respond to something, to a question a council member has, and your work has been that of a dedicated person, a person dedicated to his city, to his community, and doing work that he loves. And that is you, Tony, and you've been wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chip.
Yes, just very briefly, I'm very happy for you and very regretful that you didn't decide to serve a fifth controller. Good luck to you.
And Tony, speaking from the chair, you have been one of the perfect gentlemen of Los Angeles city government. You deserve a terrific retirement, for you are truly one of the finest folks that we have ever had around this place. You are absolutely a wonderful guy, and you deserve the best retirement that anyone could have. Go right ahead, Tony.
Let's have Ron Deaton say something. He's kept Ron out of trouble many times.
Right. I'd just like to say that Tony is not only a professional and a person who has been very instrumental in a whole host of things in the city, but for the last, since 1966, he's been a friend. And he, I think he's, I just think what Rudy just got through saying is a real, he is a gentleman and a fine family, and two young sons carrying on the tradition of his family. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with him these, since 1966. Thank you.
Tony?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. First of all, I'd like to introduce my boss, my wife here. She's been my boss for 44 years. My two sons, Paul and Anthony. Paul is an employee at Paramount. Anthony is a city employee, a city attorney, okay? Two wives are not here because they're working. They've got to keep up the activities I give.
Support the board.
Yeah, right. And I have some friends back here, Lombardos and Mrs. Flores, and a whole office is here, I guess. But just a couple of comments here. You know, our office is real small. Our office has superb employees. They're totally motivated to do a good job, and they do a good job. As you know, you haven't missed a paycheck. Your vendors have been paid. And I appreciate really all the support I've gotten. But just as important are the departmental people that I deal with, the general managers. Absolutely, they never turn me down on anything. The chief accounting employees are willing to help. If I call or my staff calls, they're willing to cooperate for the interests of the city. Also, I thank Mr. Tuttle and the prior three controllers I served under for the confidence in me and you, the governing body of the city. I have really appreciated working with all of you. I've known most of you very closely, and I have the highest respect for all of you. Anthony will still be here in the city, so there'll still be Miera here. Finally, probably just as important to my life is I thank God for giving me the opportunity to work for the greatest city in the world. And I mean that because I have dealt with many cities in this country and also in different parts of the world. But I do appreciate working for a great institution like this, and hopefully everything will continue the way I leave it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations again, Tony. God bless and Godspeed. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
another public servant, though not elected, but selected by the creator of the planet of the universe to serve us all spiritually and also in the medical care industry. This is Brother Gabriel Monarch O'H, known as the Order of Hospitalus. Did I get that right? Whereas Brother Gabriel Monarch is deserving of the highest commendation from the Los Angeles City Council for his many years of dedicated religious service. He was born in Orange Bora, Kentucky on May 11th, and I won't give you your age because it says you're younger than I am. Before entering religious life, he had a 30-year career in banking. He has been a lector, cantor, eucharistic minister to the sick in the hospitals and in their homes. In 1981, he noticed and attended to a large number of men dying in the oncology ward of the hospitals in an epidemic that later became known as AIDS. In 1990, began work at the Sierra House in Long Beach, which today has five hospice homes for men, women, and children to live out their lives, their last days in dignity. Whereas in 1992, he was accepted into the Order of the Brothers of St. John's of God, where he has served the sick and the dying. He has simultaneously served the residents at the Carl Bean AIDS Hospice. Now therefore be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby honor Brother Gabriel Monarch O'H for his selfless commitment and tireless efforts to improve the quality of life for patients living with the HIV and AIDS. May you serve the community for many more years to come. I might add that he's at St. John's today. It's in my district, the best-kept secret in the world. It's a center for those who are in need of continuous health care. And there's a waiting list that takes you one or two years to get there. So it's indeed my pleasure and honor to receive and to present a certificate of resolution to Brother Gabriel Monarch O'H.
Councilman Holden and the council members. I'm not a public speaker, so I'll do my best. Councilman Holden did bring up a few points about what I have done, but I'd like to also speak in honor of all those who volunteer at the various AIDS hospice homes throughout LA County. Yes, I accept this, but I accept... Yes, I accept this, but I accept this also in honor of those who volunteer their time, their talent. AIDS is a vicious disease. I think by now, all of us have witnessed in our lives someone that we've loved who is either living with HIV or AIDS or has died of it. I can tell you the value personally of volunteering one's time in such an effort. It means so much to these men, women, and children who are dying for someone to be there for them, so many are isolated for whatever reason. Your presence means so much to them. And St. John of God, the founder of the order I now belong, was the mother Teresa of his time in Granada, Spain. He picked up the sick suffering and dying off the streets of Granada. And that's what our order is doing today. We have been in existence for a little over 500 years. I age well. We take care of the Pope when he's ill, we own and operate the Vatican Pharmacy, and we have over 228 hospitals or centers in 47 countries. So we know a little bit about health care. So I wanted to thank each and every one of you, Councilman Holden. I'd like to thank my immediate superior for allowing me, when I entered the order, to continue my work with AIDS. And again, thank you very much. And of course, I think the council people know Brother Patrick, so he came along with me. I don't know if he wants to say anything, but here's your chance, brother.
Well, Mr. President, all council members, I want to thank you very much for giving the wall to Brother Gabriel, because he's an enthusiast and seems to take care of the long-term sick and the elderly and the aged patients. And I thank you more again. I also want to thank the council for helping and assisting us in our development of our new program and taking care of the long-term sick and injured. And thanks ameen to Mr. Holden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Wax for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of council, I have something that's really a rarity nowadays in City Hall. I have a commendation by the mayor signed by all 15 council members, and it's for retiring longtime city manager who's retiring voluntarily. And someone I'm going to miss very much. All of us know Bob Kennedy. He has been with this city almost 40 years, most currently, of course, as the Assistant Director of the Street Tree Division, where he oversees the, excuse me, street services, where he oversees street trees, street use inspection, administrative division. He's been, though, in many capacities. I always sort of think of him in a prior capacity as the chief forester in the bureau, because if anyone likes trees in the city, if anyone is devoted to the concept that trees are incredibly important to the quality of life in a neighborhood in a city, it's been Bob. And I think that the trees that have been not only planted, but the trees that have been protected and the trees that have been preserved are his lasting legacy to a more beautiful city that will, that he will leave as a result of his efforts. He is someone that all of us have worked with in our offices, our staffs really like him, that's always a really good sign and a really good test, when someone is considered as a friend and is reliable and is always willing to help. And so we are losing someone who has been a part of our family, and I wanted to take this moment to ask each of us, Bob, to wish you Godspeed and a very, very well-earned retirement. It's my honor, on behalf of all of my colleagues and the mayor, to present this to you in recognition for your incredible service to this city and the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to stand and thank Bob for all of his wonderful things that he did working with our office and projects throughout this city. Just a few moments ago, we honored Tony Mira for his many years of dedication and love of the city. Here's another perfect gentleman that has given his life to making this city a better place to live, work, and recreate, another one of the can-do guys of this city government. I wish you all the best in your retirement. You deserve nothing but the best, for truly what you have done for the past almost 40 years has been a true labor of love for this city. I am honored to be your friend, as I hope you will be likewise, and you deserve the best, my friend. Thank you and congratulations, and God bless and Godspeed.
Mr. Fuer.
I just have two words for you, Bob. Palm fronds. And only a few people know what I'm talking about, but...
At least six of us.
That's right. That's right. Joel, is that, that's not a minion, though, is it? Bob, I just want to say that I...
There's a lot of...
Yes, that's right. We have really been blessed by your presence here in the city. You've always been both incredibly responsive and especially direct and candid in our relationship, and I appreciate both the responsiveness, which means a lot to my constituents, and the directness and the candor, which means a lot to me. Congratulations and good luck.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I don't think this is fair to us somehow, but I want to say a happy and good luck goodbye. And to reminisce that quite a decade ago, when I was staff for a council member, you and I met, and I was impressed then, and it remained forever, you are one of the most can-do people in this building. And I learned very quickly that when you said, "Don't worry, I'll take care of it," that that's exactly what happened. I'm very appreciative.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Bob that I'm certainly going to miss you. You were a kindred spirit in the battle to save trees in the city and to plant more trees to beautify the neighborhoods, and I really appreciated your help along those lines. And I suppose one of the things I will always remember about you, when CRA came and had some plan to kill off 350 trees and plant some little twigs, you prevented that from happening, and I'm very pleased with your help and support.
Mr. Kowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we all feel the same way. I know that very often we'll get volatile, involved in volatile citizen complaints, and whenever there was something, I had to go out and deal with citizens, and I knew it was a tree issue, and I said, "Is Bob coming?" It was going to be easy, it was going to get, be worked out, and Bob would take over, would manage the work with the constituents, and everyone would walk away happy. And I can't think of many other city employees about whom I can say that when they get involved, but with Bob, that was always the end result, and I personally appreciate it. But two years ago, I think, I got a little alarmed because I think we gave Bob a 35-year resolution, and when I first saw it, I thought he was retiring, and all I see is we've just staved off the day a little bit longer. But I appreciate it, particularly the last two years you stayed and continued to work. Thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
I just want to join the chorus here in wishing you well, and is it okay to reveal the fact that in addition to trees, you're also interested in bluegrass?
That's unfair. You know, we have a...
I'm the only one who knows that.
You have another friend, right.
Well...
You bet on the horses?
No, it turns out that Bob is actually a friend of my next-door neighbor, who is one of the best mandolinists in the city.
Okay. Mr. Wax.
First of all, thank you very much for this presentation. We look at this time for many years and wonder what we're going to do when we step up here and address each and every one of you. But first of all, I want to take the opportunity to introduce someone that's very important to me is my wife, Patricia. And my two daughters and son-in-law, which is taking care of a pair of twins and another little one that's four months, and that's a handful, and we have two others that are in school. So you can see my future career is probably taking care of some grandkids, so... But it's important that I've developed a relationship with each and every one of you over the years, and I've really enjoyed working with you. If I can help you in the future, and it's important that we recognize that we are serving the citizens of Los Angeles to provide a better and quality life. So again, thank you for the resolution, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Next item.
Special meeting item number one, request this matter be continued by Council District One until January 25th.
If there's no objection, that will be the order in that special meeting. All right, next item.
Item number 19 on the regular agenda, request this matter be continued till January 25th.
If there's no objection, unanimous vote.
Item number 22 on the regular agenda, it's a closed-session item, City Attorney requests this matter be received and filed.
If there's no objection, unanimous vote.
Item number two on the regular agenda is the appointment of Herman Cusa to the Los Angeles Industrial Authority.
Mr. Cusa, would you come up? Is there any discussion on this item, item number two? Mr. Cusa to Industrial Development Authority? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Cusa, you've been confirmed by the City Council, we want to thank you for serving the city, and we'll send that forthwith.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Item number one on the regular agenda is item notice for public hearing.
Anybody in the chamber wants to be heard on item number one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this item? If not, prepare the roll on item number one. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is, that is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item.
Items number three through 18 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any discussion on that? Any specials, three? Huh? Three is called special by Mr. Holden. Four and five? If not, prepare the roll on four and five. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that is approved. Next item.
Items number six through 18 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number six is a presentation by Los Angeles Unified School District.
Yeah, we'll call that special. Any specials, six through, seven through 18? 18 special. Got one more to go, Nate. Seven through 17, any special? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Holden?
One more special. I'm going to take three and if we can hold that until Friday. Item three that I called special, there's no urgency.
You want to hold it until Friday? Today is Friday.
Tuesday, thank you very much.
You crossed the date line from Marina to LA. Is there any objections to continuing three until Tuesday?
The department, as far as I know, it's fine, but I just want to... It's okay? No problem.
Okay. Item number three will be continued until Tuesday. Okay. The next item.
Item number six called special.
Okay. Is Mr. Miller here? Mr. President? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
As maker of the motion, is it in order to make a few preliminary remarks, or would you prefer that I hold?
Well, why don't we have a presentation and then...
All right.
Press your button, so you'll be first.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller, the commission, Board Member Fields?
Thank you very much.
You miss City Hall, Valerie?
Yes, I do, but not this building. The old building.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Ridley Thomas, for the motion and for the invitation. It's a pleasure to be here and to see many old friends. Before I make our formal presentation, Mrs. Fields, a member of our board, who's vice-president of our board and a former education adviser to Mayor Bradley, is with us, and I know she'd like to say a few words.
Well, it's nice to see some old friends here. I came to tell you that although I haven't polled them, I am absolutely positive that a majority of the board fully supports of the team that we have in place, Ray Cortinas and Howard Miller. My only regret is that we can't keep them forever.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Valerie, for that. Thank you very much.
He'll renegotiate.
Can we count on you to help do the negotiations?
I'd like to tell you what, my appreciation for being here and also what my goals are for today. I think it's important that we establish a more formal cooperative working relationship. The issues we're talking about involve not just issues that involve...
Mr. President, just a moment. It's real difficult to hear, so if the sergeants can assist us in that regard.
Yeah, can we have some decorum, if there's such a description of this body?
Well, let's just be on unusual behavior today. How about that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. As I was saying, I appreciate being here, but my goal really is to begin a dialogue and to establish a more formal working relationship between the LA Unified School District and the City Council. The issues we'll be talking about involve not only the school district, the facilities issues involve land use decisions, and all of us and all your constituents are concerned about their children, our children. And so I hope this begins a dialogue, we'll make a presentation on the plan, but I don't view this as simply a single appearance, but the beginning of a process where we can more formally work together than we have been on these vital issues. Let me talk to you about what our needs are and what our plans are and what we're attempting to wrestle with at LAUSD.
Pardon me?
You can't hear, Mr. Hernandez.
Superintendent, I'm just trying to find out why Mr. Cortinas did not show up today.
No, Mr. Councilman, I'm not the superintendent, I'm the chief operating officer, but I understood that the invitation had come to me, and so I responded to it.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
No, and I appreciate the question, because Mr. Cortinas and I work together as a team, this invitation happened to come to me, but the presentation I make and everything I say really is on behalf of both of us.
Let me just say, as a further point of clarification, the original letter was extended to the superintendent, Zacharias. He then asked for the point person on this matter to make the presentation. That's my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's talk about the kind of problems we're wrestling with, because I think it's important to start with understanding the nature of the problem. We have in the school district today 710,000 students. We're the second-largest district in the United States after New York, significantly larger than the third-largest Chicago. And our enrollment is going up every year. Last year, we added over 14,000 new students, and in the last five years, 75,000 new students, and the projections continue at that pace. In addition, we have attempted to optimize our existing facilities almost to the breaking point. We have 214 schools out of our approximately 700 schools. They're now on year-round and multi-track schedules. Our capacity adjustment program, which really is transporting students out of the area to other areas, we have 15,000 students riding up to 90 minutes each way, some as young as six years old. We have five-year-olds who should be in kindergarten, whose parents, under their legal option, do not enroll them in kindergarten because they don't want them to be transported for such periods of time. That transportation program costs us over $25 million a year. We also have an open enrollment program where students leave their neighborhood to go to other schools, 22,000 students. other schools, 22,000 students. LAUSD has stretched to its capacity, its ability to deal with these students. I especially want to acknowledge on the council, among many old friends, Ms. Walters, who for many years was on the Board of Education before she had the good judgment to move on to the City Council, but is very familiar with these... Very familiar with these numbers, and this is a key slide. These are our projected senior high school students. This is where the crisis really hits. If we do not have...
Howard, can you wait just a second?
Of course.
I just want to point out that Beth Schuster, who's been covering City Hall for the Los Angeles Times for some time, is leaving and going over to the sheriffs, I think they're gonna lock her up or something. But we're gonna miss you, Beth, and we wish you the best over there. Okay, Howard, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Mr. President. I think a well-deserved comment. Beth, good luck. Thank you. This is the key slide to understand what we're wrestling with. If we had continued going down the path we had been going down in terms of looking for large sites, and I'll talk more about that, and projected timelines for completing schools, in September 2006, we would not have had a single high school seat available for students. It means every middle school student who was graduating in the eighth grade in June 2006, none of them would have had seat space available. Now, that was based on our old model for how we were building schools. And the old model called for design profiles with a focus on large sites. We can build primary centers on two to three acres, we've needed four to 10 acres of land for elementary schools, nine to 15 acres for middle schools, and 20 to 25 acres for senior high schools. And the old model focused on those sizes. We continue to look for the 20 to 25 acre and the large sites. But let's look at what the years to completion, and these are very optimistic, by the way, average years to completion of different schools. We can complete primary centers, which are kindergarten to third-grade schools, in one and a half to two and a half years from the time the need is identified. It takes more, four to five years to complete elementary schools, it takes five to seven years, at best case, to complete junior high schools. These are not historic, but our best projections. It takes six to nine years, and it's closer to nine in reality, it's an optimistic projection, to complete a senior high school on the classic model, 20 to 25 acres. The construction costs for those schools are dramatically different in terms of student seat cost. We can build a primary center for somewhat more than $20,000 a seat. An elementary school for $25,000, a middle school for in the high twenties to $30,000. The large-site senior high schools cost us in excess of $40,000 a seat. So when we look at the old model, what we're looking at is a long period of time to finish high schools and a much higher cost for the large-site high school seats. Now, there's an alternative model, and this is what we are looking at, not every place in the city, because places are different and different areas have different needs. But it's an alternative model to meet the need in some significant areas. And the model is to focus on building kindergarten to third-grade primary schools as our main focus for new land. These are one and a half to two and a half acre sites. We then function on our existing land, and we own a lot of land, and convert our elementary schools to become grades four through eight, and we modernize current middle schools to become high schools, and we build up on our own land and underground, and as we utilize our own land in the most efficient way. Let me give you, though it is not within the city of Los Angeles, a classic area where this works in. Southgate High School has 4,200 students in it today, it was built for 1,200 students. If you go to Southgate High School during lunch hour, you'll see that the students, when the bell rings, who are at the end of the line, can't get through the lunch line and complete their lunch by the time the lunch period is over. 4,200 students, site for 12. You walk through the halls and you have to do broken field running, you need a good broken field runner to walk through the halls of Southgate High School. Southgate Middle School, which is about two miles away, is a magnificent site. It's 20-plus acres, it has a great building on it, it has 4,500 middle school students in a school that was built for about 13 or 1400. If, as an alternative to looking for the large site, what we do is convert Southgate Middle School to a high school, which we can do relatively easily. We now have 4,200 students on two schools, 2,100 in each school. We've solved the high school problem in that area without having to find large sites, which we have not been able to find. That's the essence of the alternative strategy. We then go down and modernize grade four to eight and build primary centers, but instead of facing a situation where we don't have a single high school seat in 2006, we have the real opportunity to solve our seat space problem within a five-year period. Now, let's look at some of the advantages we have under the strategy that we're talking about. Primary centers are easier to acquire, one and a half to two acres, they cost less generally. Younger students stay closer to home. By building primary centers, we can have the youngest students, ages five through eight, closest to home. We can also focus on where we have to focus. If we're really gonna solve the educational problem, we've got to keep going down in age, we've got to use this as a base to go to four-year-olds, ultimately three-year-olds. The primary centers also have educational advantages that are tremendously important. They become, and some people think it's the wrong focus when I use this phrase, but they become reading machines. Nobody leaves the primary center until they read at grade level, at grade three. I've said a lot, and some of you may have heard me, that the politics of education are very simple. If every third-grade student read at the third-grade level, there would be no politics of education. And Superintendent Cortinas and I are determined to focus the efforts of the district on reading programs in every grade, and especially on reading programs in the youngest grade. If we have third-grade students reading at third-grade level, then those students can go on and do the math and the science and the history and all the areas. That's what we must do, that's what we've failed at, and the primary centers are not only a facility strategy, they are a strategy for focusing on education, to have the kids read and make it work. We then modernize elementary sites for 4-8 use. That becomes possible because the kindergarten to third-grade children are now out of the elementary schools. We find some new sites for smaller elementary schools, and some people have questioned the 4-8 model, but some of the most successful schools in this country are kindergarten to eighth grade, both private and public. And so you can think of the plan almost as a K-8 plan with the K-3 students at one site and the 4-8 at another. And then we modernize the middle school sites, which in most cases we can do. We do a modernization, we make sure the facilities are there, but we're talking about many junior high school sites with significant land large enough to deal with the high school population. And what we could do is double our senior high capacity at the lowest cost within five years. Essentially, what we're doing with this strategy is adding senior high school seats at primary school prices and a primary school timeline. That's the essence of the strategy. We also must build up on our existing sites, we've got to use the land we already own. Go ahead. So what we're suggesting is an alternative in many areas of the city, it's greater use of our existing space, it's cost-effective in terms of the overall cost, it expands capacity quickly, it allows us to beat the September 2006 deadline, and we have more students housed in newer, modernized facilities than under the old plan. This is what...
Okay, before we proceed...
These are the ones I wanted.
Tom, Tom Labange has a group of visitors from our sister city. Tom, would you introduce some, please?
Mr. Council, thank you very much. We have a distinguished delegation who's been studying for the last year at Cal State Northridge from our sister city of Guangzhou, China, and we have the Deputy Director of Information and Intergovernmental Affairs, Xin Jiang, from Guangzhou, for a brief hello.
Hello, Honorable President, City Council, and ladies and gentlemen, good morning. And we are honored today to be here in this LA Council, and we are sent by the Guangzhou government to be here for one-year study. We studied in Cal State Northridge, and we are leaving next week. So we are very, it was very wonderful experience in our life to be here for one-year study in LA. We learned lots of things from you, and we hope that Guangzhou and Los Angeles, the friendship between the two cities will be promoted in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And delegation, please stand. Please stand so you can be recognized by the great City Council. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and welcome to all of our visitors. Mr. Holden for an introduction.
Welcome to the chambers, Ms. Melina Reinman and the students from Los Angeles Youth at Work are visiting City Hall here for the Law and Politics Day. By the way, she is the director. Would they all stand, please, and give them a round of a welcome?
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think we owe a thanks to Mr. Miller and Ms. Fields for being here because of our mutual concern for the children in our communities and the desire to ensure that they have the best facilities in which to learn. This is essentially what gave impetus to the motion that was introduced in October of last year. It is clear that LAUSD was and or is embarking on a plan to build several new schools. Members of the council wanted to know as precisely as possible what number of schools that might be. Residents in our respective council districts, the property owners throughout the city have been receiving information, some accurate, some perhaps inaccurate, about what is going on and what will impact their respective workplaces and or living environments. And the communication between the Los Angeles Unified School District and the city of Los Angeles proper has not been what some of us thought it should be, and we see this as a step in the direction of making sure that we communicate more effectively. Our concern significantly is that of land use and how the building of new schools and residential areas and or commercial areas will impact the plans, may they, be they redevelopment plans, be they neighborhood planning processes, et cetera. And so, Mr. President, members of the council, I thought it would be useful for us to have an opportunity to ask our questions, get them on the table, so that we can have a fruitful exchange, a candid exchange, and hopefully end on a note of constructively collaborating in the interests of better schools, better neighborhoods, better learning environments, a better city, a better school district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I want to thank my colleague for causing this initial discussion to begin. I want to thank Mr. Miller and School Board Member Fields for coming and beginning a process of what I hope will be much better communication between the district and the city, as my colleague has already indicated. I have a few questions, and then I am looking to both examine past history in terms of the relations between the board and the district and the city, and work with the school board and the district administration to come up with an in-place infrastructure, vehicle, process, whatever the term, to see to it that the communication and the flow of information stays constant and open and productive, as well as looking at some of these very current, immediate pressing needs and large issues such as construction of new facilities, parking issues, school safety issues, and a variety of other things. And I couldn't agree more, Mr. Miller, with your comment, that it behooves us to work together because your constituents are our constituents, and most importantly, they are the children and their families of this city. I would like to, if you would take a quick moment, to respond to me, is the school district, and if so, how, working currently, for instance, with our Department of Water and Power that is in the process of selling off surplus land, hopefully some of which could be potentially perfect sites, healthy, non-hazardous sites, and well-located for potential school facilities? And also, if you would comment on the fact that, for example, in the Far West Valley, colleagues, a place where maybe many of you think such problems don't exist, very close together, I have two extremely overcrowded, under-resourced, year-round schools, and not very far from them, a vacant, unused middle school. How is that, what are we going to do to relieve those congested schools and not waste school facilities that are sitting there unused? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You wanted to respond, or?
I meant the council's pleasure, in terms of what you would like.
She always does that, she talks for three minutes, but she always has a couple of questions, and so it goes on.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Well, then let me give a brief answer. The school you're referring to, the closed used junior high school, is on our list of schools to be modernized and reopened. The DWP property, we've looked closely at the list, we had one that we'd identified that looked fine, but there are restrictions we're under that really become very severe. For example, we can't build within a quarter mile of a landfill. When we do a landfill overlay, we found that the sites, some of the sites we'd looked at, were not appropriate, but we're continuing to look closely at that list.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of council, I'd like to say I appreciate the fact that Mr. Miller's here and Ms. Fields was here, but the reality is I don't. I expected Mr. Cortinas, the president of the board, to be here, and we're gonna talk about these kinds of relationships. And I'm saying it quite frankly because there's no issue right now that has me more upset than the decision-making I've been sending to the school district regarding schools in my district. Because every time they make a decision, and I'm not just talking about the Belmont Learning Center, they're talking about displacing hundreds of families in terms of their houses, and they don't talk about how they're gonna replace that housing. I have to deal with the fact that kids get run over by cars because we put schools on major corridors. And then I find out that the school district doesn't even apply to the city to paint crossrocks and to put no school signs, and I had to get like 700 school signs up because the district hadn't asked for them. But the kids get killed, and we're the ones who have to deal with it. And how it is that you plan and take into account traffic counts, and where you're putting these kids, and what you're requiring them to do is extremely important to me. I have to deal with the fact that new schools that are built, and I'll use Esperanza as an example, because I was happy that we built that school because it alleviated some of the overcrowding at 10th Street, where there was 2,700 kids attending that elementary school. A child was killed, and now the teachers are asking for parking, preferential permits, without taking into account that the people who live there can't park. And almost every one of my elementary schools right now in my entire district, parking is the big issue. It is not like the school district has all these parking shuttle programs and has all these off-site parking locations. Every time you add to a school, you take away playground space, you bring in more bungalows, you bring in more employees, and you don't deal with the realities of the impact of that neighborhood, and the kinds of trips that are caused. The credibility the school district has with me, because I've been working very hard at trying to deal with some of these issues with the school district and participating on-site location and closing schools, is nil right now, especially when I see the decision at the Belmont Learning Center. Now, my problem at Belmont is this, kids at Castelar Elementary School, at Logan Elementary School, at, you know, Union Elementary School, they don't have a home junior high school they can plan to go to now. Because Berando doesn't have a home high school they can send any kids to now. And while we've been stalling on these decisions, the problem has gotten more complex. So as I saw your planning right now, that might work in some parts of the city where you have schools that are closed because you didn't have the enrollment at the time. It's not gonna work on my part of the city. See, what has to happen is you have to be part of our planning process, and you have to understand our commitment to schools. But that's not what's happened. I'm glad Mr. Ridley Thomas asked you to come in, but, you know, when you throw out there that we're looking at the cornfields without taking into account that it's in the impairment zone and the job creation that we pointed out, that was upsetting to me yesterday. I'm just trying to explain it, Mr. President, because I have been one of the council members who actively has been trying to work with the school district on its planning issues, and I need to share with you that it hasn't been reciprocal. And I'm laying my ground now, because whether I'm on this council or not... And I'm laying my ground now, because whether I'm on this council or not, this is an issue that's extremely upsetting, and you need to understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr... Mr. Wax?
I just wanted to thank you for being here. I know there are some people that are disappointed that Mr. Cortinas isn't here. I would hope you'd come more often. That, you know, the cameras are here now because this is your first time and all that. You come more often, they'll go, because it'll be old hat, but it'll be important to us to be, I think, kept informed on a regular basis. And I would welcome if you would establish some, some way of sort of appearing on a more, on a more regular basis. I think there's some ironies here. I think, for example, as I listened to you describe the crisis in, in, you know, in space, that it may have led to, that it may have ironically led to something good. I think that if that's what it's going to take to lead to smaller schools, that will be a victory in the long run. I think that, you know, I mean, my personal view is forgetting that Belmont is an environmental or fiscal disaster. I think 5,000, I think that building 5,000 student schools is just totally inappropriate. And the emphasis on smaller schools and more neighborhood schools is where you should go. So if this has forced you to do that, I think it's very creative, for example, in the East Valley, your solutions of the building of the primary centers and the plan that you put in place there. If that leads to more facilities that are smaller, I think that some good will have come out of this. So, but I think that the point of this is, is that this, these aren't just educational issues. When you talk about citing schools, say, I know in my district, there are land use issues and planning issues and economic development issues as well. We talk about the Robinson May site, for example, in North Hollywood and in Laurel Plaza. So there's a need to have this ongoing, and it shouldn't be just like a one-time report where all the media's here and we all get up and we'll, and you'll make your speech and we'll make ours. It has to be more on a, on a regular basis. I think that there's a great need for that and a hungering for that. And it could be, the more often it occurs, I think, the more constructive that it will be. So I'm glad you're here. I welcome it, and I hope that you'll come back and almost commit yourself to coming back on a regular occasion.
May I make, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Ferraro? When I was serving as Mayor Bradley's education advisor, we provided an office for the liaison from the school district, so he was here on a daily basis and met with council members on a daily basis. My suggestion that for you to consider is to open an office like that yourself, providing a liaison to the district and having the district provide a liaison to you.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you also for being here and joining us in the council today. We're going to speak with a unified voice on how important education is to us. My cornet has really raised most of the issues in the comments I want to share with you, but I want to take the opportunity to echo what my constituents are telling me when it comes to schools, those that haven't been said already. And for those people who don't value education as the key to success for our young people as much as we might, I also appeal to their economic considerations, because when we look at the future of the city of Los Angeles and the strength of our economy on a global level, education is one of the major challenges we have to be able to compete and stay healthy as a city. Again, some of the items that weren't reached before. I've had, unfortunately, too many situations in my district where the, the, the unified district comes in with proposals, with ideas of where to build new schools, where to take over land, and does not do the community outreach necessary, and that is responsibly done, to have the community be part of that process. And I know you're in a tough spot, because where schools are needed the most are the areas where overcrowding exists the most. And it's also areas where you have the sometimes option of, are you going to eminent domain residential areas, or are you going to go into industrial areas? And Belmont has created a bad backdrop for those kinds of decisions. But community outreach has to be done in a way that isn't being done right now. Sending flyers out, a press conference, does not cut it. The people who are quick to react aren't always reflective of the community as a whole in the specific areas you're looking into. So you're here today saying, let's work together. I'm appealing to you, as a council member of the 7th District, saying, let's work together to reach to the people that probably have more at stake in the future of school facilities that aren't being included in the process right now. One other item: In the model, the presentation you showed of the conversion of middle schools to high school facilities, one of our priorities, or my priority certainly, is providing alternatives for young people after school, on weekends, whether they're recreational programs, cultural programs, something to keep young people busy. And as we're moving to convert middle schools to high schools, based on your presentation, my priority is first, instruction, curriculum, and learning. But at the same time, what are we doing in terms of football, or baseball, or other athletic programs, after-school programs, that we may not be building the infrastructure for when it comes to facilities? Now, I see that, if I'm going to look into a crystal ball here, as not, not so much a burden, but additional responsibilities on the city, through our parks, through our libraries, to, again, work together to create the situation where, depending on the school you go to, you either have options or you don't. So I just want to raise that, because I know the budget process is still down the road a couple of months, but if the school district model is going to be pursued, then we need to work together to address those types of issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's nice to have our friends, Mr. Miller, Ms. Fields, here, who, of course, worked extensively with the city for a long time. There's a theme that everybody has shared, and I want to take it to the next level. The theme is the importance of collaboration. And it seems like a given, but I think that what's been happening is a lot of very productive efforts on an ad hoc basis. Ad hoc discussions with water and power. Mayor Riordan has attempted to be very constructive in identifying sites. Mr. Hernandez refers to his efforts in his own district. But these are not systematic efforts. And I'm going to actually make a motion. I'm glad Mr. Ridley Thomas brought this in and gives us the opportunity to forward some ideas. I'm going to move that we formalize what has been a catch-as-catch-can situation and create a joint committee comprised of representatives from the school district, led by Mr. Miller as the operations staffer here, and city departments that have a role in facilities. Ms. Chick referred to water and power, general services, and, and others that the council would designate, so that the planning department certainly would be involved, so that there are no surprises. The collaboration is ongoing. The meetings are frequent. And we never find ourselves in a situation of having to rely on learning something in the newspaper when some of us aren't involved in something, leaving community members in the dark. So I would move that we formalize this, create a systematic approach that shows that the city and the school district recognize, that as Mr. Padilla and others have said, we have a common goal here that relates to every priority in our city. I hope there's a second for that motion. We can actually proceed on that basis and, and be a team.
Mr. Savornich?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I also would like to thank our friends from the school district for being here. Each one of us, the 15 around this council horseshoe, has a real passion to make sure what happens for our children is positive. More than any other council member in this chamber, my family will be directly affected as my little boy will either enter kindergarten this September or next September, and my little girl following within five years. And so one of the things to which I'd like to hear and would like to work with the school district is to embrace this concept of K through 3 and to take a look on how we can make this work through all parts of the city. I was blessed growing up in the same neighborhood that we now reside, to which my neighborhood elementary school was a five-minute walk. The challenge for us will be was whether or not that neighborhood school will have room for my son because of our trying to keep the per pupil in a classroom low and our having to take a look at considerations that we may have to drive him 15, 20 minutes, a half an hour, to a school that would have room. And so one of the things I think that parents all across the city, and, and I was happy to hear it, have concern or are now demanding is that, for young children especially, if we are putting children for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, an hour, or more on a school bus at a young age, what, what really are we doing to that, to that child in regards to developing a child that can be educated in a neighborhood school close to home rather than having them spend two hours on a bus a day? I think everything that I've heard so far from both the district and my colleagues is a step in the right direction. And I think in part of formalizing this process, what I also would like to see is a joint effort between the planning staffs of the Los Angeles Unified School District and the Los Angeles City Planning Department, work together as we embrace these issues across the city. And I think that one of the things that, that we need to know is that, you know, back in the history of this city, we made a distinct delineation between the city government's business and the school district's business. And we kind of operate in our own two little worlds, but I think these issues are much more important than us just, you know, revolving around our own axes here in regards to these issues, that we are going to have to work together for the betterment of our children. And I would like to embrace that concept, as Mr. Fuhr articulated and others, because I think this is where we really have to go in regards to this issue. It's far too important for each one of us just to be doing our own thing. I think we have to work together, and I look forward to seeing that happen.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pacheco?
Thank you. Mr. Miller, I just wanted to, and Board Member Fields, I just wanted to share with you that my first public school experience was at the University of California at Berkeley. Prior to that, I'd basically gone to all Catholic schools. So I don't have a personal reference point when it comes to the education of children in the public schools. But when I see the movement of going towards areas that we're trying to economically develop for the families, such as the cornfields in Mike's district, or the Crown Coach site in my district, I have a lot of concern about the mixed messages I'm hearing from the board. In one instance, I keep hearing that you're moving away from industrial sites because of contamination issues and how poorly they are for school sites. And at the same time, I hear that you're going into prime industrial sites that we have prepped for redevelopment and then want to come in and basically swoop that property. So I just want you to know that I share Councilmember Hernandez's viewpoint and concern, and put you on notice that in terms of the Crown Coach site in the 14th District, that I'm going to do everything I can to protect it from the school board swooping in and taking our economic development for those families who will be working there, as opposed to trying to place a school site in a purely industrial area. So I just wanted to share that with you because I have some grave concerns about the fact that we don't have a relationship where this won't happen, where we're going a different direction. So I do share Councilmember Savornich's point that we need to start working together so that we don't end up at the different ends of the table and basically digging our heels in, because I can tell you right now that I was alarmed to find out that that was a direction that you were being directed to in my district without anyone even approaching my office to talk about what available space or what options were available for the school sites in the 14th Council District.
Ms. Zikowski?
Members, rarely have I heard us speak with one voice in 15 different echoes, but it's all good news. And more, the, the two most important statements and words that are out there are communication and collaboration. I appreciate Mr. Fuhr's efforts to institutionalize and Ms. Field's suggestion about an office and collaboration and liaisons both ways. We all have the stories. My perspective and my story is, whenever I have heard that the school district is interested in something in my district, my immediate reaction is positive, and let me work with you and let me help. The only unfortunate stories that I am telling is that usually I hear about it after the problem has already started. After, when I'm getting it, not from the school district, I get it from the constituents who say they're going to do this to us. And it's sort of like an imposition where there hasn't been earlier communication, earlier outreach, earlier discussion, not as to whether or not the school may be right or wrong, but how it's going to be put in. How, where's the teacher parking? What's the circulation going to be? How's it going to impact the neighborhood? All of which, many of which, have solutions. All of these are ideas and problems that can be worked out, worked out ahead of time, doesn't involve delay, doesn't involve problems in terms of litigation or a fight. It gets everybody at the table earlier. We, around the, this, the horseshoe, have learned that, in some instances, the hard way, with major, major development projects. But again, once we institutionalize this and underscore collaboration and communication, hopefully we'll be able to take that chart of yours and help collapse it, help get things delivered more quickly. And as is indicated, in the Department of General Services, we also have the Real Estate Management Group, which has lists and lists of surplus property in the collaborative sense, as we're looking at libraries, that we're looking at Constituent Services Center, as we're looking at reuse of parking lots. Maybe those are opportunities as well. All of it can be explored if we work together. So I think that's the word that you're hearing. Thank you.
All right. I actually was next when I was over there, so I'm just going to insert a couple of comments here and then go back to the rest of the list, and I'll even put the timer on for myself here.
Good.
I knew you'd like that, Nate, because you're up next. I, I, all I really want to add to this is that Mrs. Fields certainly knows about this, and I want to thank you for your support. But in the last year or so, there was a proposal allegedly coming from the school district, although I expect that it came in large part from the private school that wanted the land. And I understand, unfortunately, that Mayor Riordan was supporting it, although he seems to have backed off, or the school board did, to use some of the land the school district already owns for its own facilities, to give it away to a private school in exchange for, then they get to build the school without buying any land, and in exchange, they were going to be mentors to, to the public school children, who have plenty of other older public school children right up the block. I wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that the district chose not to do that. And Valerie, I particularly wanted to thank you for your help in, in preventing the giveaway of the public resources, because here we're having a discussion about how hard it is to get the land that we need for the public schools, and, and we really can't have proposals to give away the land we've got. The only other comment I would make is really not directed so much at the district, because I think others here have covered the possible advantages of letting us in on the process earlier. But I, I'm really appalled at the number of times I have heard from community groups a tale of one of their great triumphs, which was to prevent the construction of a school in their neighborhood. Now, you can't have a neighborhood school unless people will allow it to be put in the neighborhood. And, and I really wish I knew the answer to that. I think Cindy may be on to part of it, but I would urge you to take full advantage of whatever knowledge we may have of property that's, if not smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood, at least close enough to it, so that it could be used as a neighborhood kind of school. And I'm still well within my times. Mr. Holden's turn.
Thank you, Howard and Valerie. Welcome. Each of you, you know, I supported when you guys ran, so I'm not really against you. I'm just concerned about what's happening over there. Now, if they're going to put together this joint committee, it is not complete because there may be some differences between what the city is saying that we should have or you can have, and what you're saying you'd like to have. So I think you have to bring in a state allocation board, the ones who kind of write the check, and the state, they can be like the referee. And if we don't get them to do it, we can get enough assimilmen and enough senators who's serving on the state allocation board to say, yes, the council persons who are elected for the district are right. So I'm going to recommend that if we have such a committee, a meeting with you, then we should have the state allocation board at least coming in when there's a difference of opinion as to what should be done. Now, then I think if you're going to have a master plan, you have to consider, you have to have a contingency plan. It is my stronger belief that if you have on the ballot the proposition of breaking up the district, we have the valley and inner city, I believe that will happen. And so all your plans there will go down the tube. The other thing that I see, somewhere it is, I don't understand the rationale when they start looking at contaminated soil. If you exclude that, you exclude the, some other industrial sites, what do you have left except removing people from their homes? And that's why we should have this committee, because we have a shortage of homes, affordable housing. I remember once in my district, at the Mount Vernon Middle School, they were going to move 40 homes to expand the school. And when I went out there, I was working for Kenny at the time, they could have gone to the east and to the north and took up some commercial property and left those 40 homes alone. When they decided they could do that, then they decided to do- When they decided they could do that, then they decided to do nothing. They only took one home. But they were going to take 40. Over there in Arlington, as another elementary school, they were going to take about 40 homes. But we changed the legislation in Sacramento, which says that you can build up a third story, you don't need as much play yard. In New York, they play on the roof. You don't need as much play yard, so therefore they left those homes alone. I think we have some creative thinking that's been done in other cities. We don't have to invade people's properties and take it away from them. I always say that Belmont High School, you talk about politics, in my view, is political. It's political to invade this system and to take control. That's what was employed there. And the reason why I say that so emphatically, because people live there in their homes 50 years ago, 75 years ago, they lived there. And when you build a subway here, you see the contaminated soil, we move it all the time. This is Los Angeles. You do some soil sampling tests at the schools which we not have in place, you have virtually the same thing. Then what it's all about? Politics and who's in control, who makes the decision, who lives or dies, who homes they take or homes they do not take.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. It's Mrs. Walters's turn.
I didn't go over.
Oh, yeah, you did. Timer's right here.
See there? I was going to use some of your time.
I'm sorry. All right. We'll go, Mrs. Walters will pass for the moment, leave her on there, and we go now to Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, several excellent suggestions by way of motion have come to our attention. May I direct your attention to the original motion, which calls for a report from the chief legislative analyst and the city administrative officer to prepare such a report on the fiscal impacts as well as the planning impacts of LAUSD's new school construction program. Mr. Deaton has indicated that that report will be forthcoming. The motion made by Mr. Fuhr, the motion made by, the idea advanced by Mr. Hernandez, the comments made by Ms. Chik seem to me to be appropriately built into that report. It was the original intent to cause a joint committee of the intergovernmental relations planning and, at the time, as I recall, government efficiency, to see if we couldn't lock in in a more formal way the things that need to be treated with respect to issues unresolved between LAUSD and the city proper on how we constructively work toward the building of new schools, be they primary school centers, be they high schools, because we obviously have needs for both. I would simply then suggest that the suggestions, the motions that have been advanced be part of the CLA, CIO report, which is yet to be submitted. I would think approximately 30-day period would be useful, and in that regard, all the things that we suggested could very well be adopted. Madam President, I would so move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Chik, you're up next.
Yes, and in seconding that, Mr. Ridley Thomas, I would like to just slightly expand on it. I think the immediate focus, the crisis issue, both for the school district and for us in the city, are the land use school siting issues. But what I would like particularly the CLA, I think, to report back on in conjunction with the school district are some recommendations on a structure for continuing to go forward. It is somewhat, I think, of a disgrace to look back historically and see the lack of teamwork and working relationship that has occurred amongst people who all care about educating our children. And we have issues such as joint use agreements, we have parking issues, and believe me, we all know we have school traffic and safety issues. So we have our different city departments and school entities working together, but it's never risen to a true partnership. So in that report, if we could direct CLA, CIO, any relevant city departments, planning to work with the school district in coming back with, in that report, recommendations on how to disallow a past lack of formal contact and create it going forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, and again, Mr. Miller and Ms. Fields, now I'm going to get real specific to Belmont, because I think I need you to answer some questions to all my colleagues. When Belmont was initially proposed, what was being proposed was a junior high school on the corner of, I guess, Temple and Bowdrie. And we understood the need of that junior high school and it was supportive. And the Central City West Plan was looking at building housing on the majority of that land. And we had dealt with the State Department of Toxic Substance Contaminations and so forth, and we knew that there would have to be mitigation. When the school district, and not with my consultation or not with any dialogue with me, chose to buy the rest of the land to build a high school, okay, I was upset because it was displacing the potential for the development of the housing that the Central City West Plan called for. And the school district made a commitment to replace that housing, even though they knew they weren't going to get state allocation for that kind of purpose. They also made a commitment to build all this open space in terms of the fields and the recreation facility, and I made a commitment to work with the school district and try to make that a reality, because that was something that was definitely needed for the community. And I felt that those were mitigation measures. And so that you know, we went to the school district and we asked that you also participate in basically taking out a conditional use permit for the mixed-use portion, the store, the retail component, and you agreed to do that. And part of that, we were talking about, is how do we deal with the traffic mitigation? And we knew that because you were doing this private sector part, you would have to come to the city. Now what's happened is you made a recommendation, based on a lot of other issues, to basically not build a school, not open the school there. Even though you did an EIR under the guise of building a school, now you're talking about administrative offices, now you're talking about warehouse space, now you're talking about trips, automobile traffic and congestion along Glendale Quarter that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis. My question to you, are you going to redo the EIR? Are you going to deal with the mitigation measures for your proposed reuse of the site? Or are you just going to use your authority and do what you want to do? Because it's not even approaching the issue of the commitments to the community, and I'm talking about the commitments you've made to this council. And I need you to answer that question for us today. And if you have to go back to the board, you have to tell us that. But I'm talking about previous commitments made to this council.
All right. Mrs. Walters is not back yet. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If you could answer my questions.
Go ahead.
We will go back to the board, Mr. Hernandez, with your requests. The one thing we learned, I think, when you say you're just going ahead and do something without us, is that whatever the state of the law may be, we have to work with you, and that's why we're here today. But in terms of the technical answers to your questions, we'll go back to the board. I'll get an answer specifically back to you on those questions.
Okay. So I made the question very specific for that purpose, and if you want me to follow through on that, I want to.
Sorry. Okay. All right. It's your turn. You have to be to your microphone. I just want to remind you, we do have a motion on the floor to incorporate all the suggestions that have been made today into the CLA report that we're expecting back in 30 days. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Miller.
Hold on. It's Mr. Holden's time. Go.
We have a 6A that will be attached to that.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, I'm not going to ask you to respond to the question, I'm just going to make a statement. I'm over in this corner. The Belmont High School, if it had been continuously developed, and students would have been occupying it, school today, and that's a school that you really needed, and you still do. It is my opinion and the opinion of people that I talked to, especially some of my colleagues and people who were directly affected by it, who have moved out, whose kids would perhaps go to school there, who lived there before, don't have the same kind of fear that has been suggested by some members of the school board and their legal spokespersons. I would seriously, speaking on that half and myself, urge you to consider moving forward, unless you find some strong evidence why you shouldn't, to finish that school, open it up, and solve some of your student population problems. It's been a political contest in the eyes of many, and it turns out to be essentially nothing more, given the fact that people lived there before. It would certainly make me feel good and others that if you were, if that school were to go ahead and be completed and open up, then of course, you're perhaps halfway home when it comes to some of your high schools. You do have eminent domain, and the school district does, over all local government agencies. But that's a right that should not be abused. In some cases, I can say that it has been. In my district, it was about to happen at Mount Vernon Junior High School, and also certainly at the Ambassador Site. It's been 10, 12 years. The state allocation board voted to give them...